It is going around again.
Yeah.
And around.
Yep.
And back.
Over with it.
Over with it. It's clean living or clear liquid? I'm not sure which.
Interesting.
We're the good guy, young, how it goes. All right, it is seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. For the annual council, Monday, February third. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coffee.
Present.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Here.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Councilmember McDermott.
Here.
Good, across approval of the January twenty first minutes. Salute.
Second.
Motion second to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Unfinished business ordinance number seventeen seventy twenty twenty five, and ordering amending the zoning map of the city of Angola, Indiana. This is the property eighteen fifty North State Road eight twenty seven for the second reading.
Moves to approve.
Second.
Motion second to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any other unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll go on to new business resolution number twenty twenty five eight eighty seven, a resolution of the council of the city of Angola, Indiana, approving appropriation encumbrances for twenty twenty five.
Just a question, maybe for Ryan, because I'm new, first time I've seen this. I know there are eleven funds. Are they revenue funds that you're carrying over, expense funds? I'm not sure what they are.
So these are expenses that have already, in twenty twenty four, the projects were already approved, and purchase orders were already written for these things. So the funds you see are the different funds that they're getting paid from.
That's why there's eleven of them, there are eleven projects that are being carried forward.
No, there's multiple, multiple items. What you're seeing is just, it's divided by how much is being carried forward for each fund. Each individual fund that the projects are paid out of.
Okay, and that's done every year, you always have some of that?
Yep.
They call it carryover, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it's just, basically, we encumber the funds from the previous year's budget and carry those over because the monies were already appropriated in the previous year, but we have to make it official by a resolution saying if those amounts were due.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, request approval of list of outstanding warrants declared canceled as of December thirty first twenty twenty four, outstanding and unpaid from twenty two, uh, nineteen, or twenty twenty two, for the year, for the year twenty twenty two, in an amount of seven hundred fifty six dollars and seventy eight cents.
Either those water sewer bills mostly?
Yeah, mostly.
Yeah, my thought was, you guys did a great job, if the worst one's a hundred dollars.
Well, these are funds that were being, uh, these are checks that we wrote that were never cashed, so we're taking the checks off of those.
Oh, wow, oh, wow, okay, got it. Definitely move to approve.
Motion second, would you give?
Motion, got it.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed. Actually, a couple of years ago, we had one that was for Ken Schell, that was on the list, and we ended up.
He didn't catch. Embarrassed.
Thanks for bringing it up again, too.
Sorry about that. Uh, reports, court right here.
None from you. Uh, actually, just a reminder, there's a special council meeting next Monday night at seven o'clock.
Uh, Kim?
No report.
Aretha?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Redder?
No report.
No report, Maron.
No report.
All right, a quest, a request approval for the allowance of accounts payable, voucher seventy two thousand five hundred eighty through seventy two thousand seven seventy six, totaling eight hundred twenty two thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and seventy six cents.
I moved to pay the bills, especially with our guest here.
Yes, second. Motion second to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Other new business, we do have a number of things on other new business, and we apologize for not having this out to you when the agendas went out, there's a lot of information and two bond ordinances were being asked to approve this evening. And I tell you what, let's introduce one, let's take action on it, and then during discussion, Jeff, you can get up and have a conversation. So it's going to be ordinance number seventeen seventy one twenty twenty five, and it is a long title, an ordinance of the city of Angola authorizing the issuance of Water Works Revenue Bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain addition, extensions, and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city. The issuance of revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenue of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, and all matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent with here, uh, yeah, inconsistent herein or herewith. And we have a motion, a second, we'll start discussion.
I move that we approve the ordinance.
You have a motion, this, your second?
My second.
Under discussion, Jeff, would you like to walk us through this, please?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Jeff, I'm with Baker Tilly. Um, so ordinance seventeen seventy one dash twenty twenty five is the ordinance authorizing the proposed water project that is being proposed to construct the water Pocagin extension to serve the Pocagin Park, um, as well as some other water capital project needs. So the ordinance itself authorizes a not to exceed number. Um, so, uh, the, I know the city's going to be opening bids on Monday, so we'll know more exactly what the project is going to cost, but the ordinance, uh, sets a not to exceed number of twelve million four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the project. Um, I will tell you, based on the estimates for the project, which includes the Pocagin piece and the city's, uh, capital project needs, uh, total, estimate total of ten million two hundred and eighteen thousand, so we've got a couple million there of wiggle room, um, expecting that the bids would come in within that, uh, within that range. Um, the Pocagin piece is estimated right now at about nine point two million, uh, that is going to be paid for, as you know, by the state, directly from the state. The city's piece of the project, uh, which consists of the water storage tank rehab at Calvary, the two hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank, and then also the tank at three hundred north. Um, those projects total just, just north of a million dollars. So, uh, the city-specific projects, um, we're anticipating issuing a tax-exempt bond through the SRF program, and they've offered a zero percent uh, interest rate, so essentially no interest on, on the money, uh, which would be repaid over roughly a twenty-year period. Um, in terms of timing, uh, of course, the introduction of the ordinance is tonight, that's really just to kind of keep, uh, keep in line, or keep on track, if you will, with the, um, anticipated closing on the bonds with SRF, which is anticipated to be, uh, March eleventh. Um, so we do have somewhat of a short timeline, uh, to, to get to closing here. Um, so, and, and that's part of, uh, the, uh, the need for the consideration of the adoption of the bond ordinance then on, on Monday at the special meeting, which would keep us on track in terms of required publications and some other things that need to be accomplished, so. Um, so the, the ordinance itself, uh, really just kind of lays out the, the parameters of the borrowing. Uh, again, not to exceed amount of the project, not to exceed amount of the proposed SRF loan, um, establishes the repayment terms, the optional redemption provisions, um, and then uh, any future parity provisions, if the city were to issue additional debt down the road, there are certain requirements that have to be met, uh, in order to do that, so this ordinance, um, sets forth those terms. Um, and, uh, again, keeps us on track with, uh, potential closing then in early March, so. With that, happy to, well, actually, one other thing I'll just update you on, uh, Marin and Ryan and I had a, had a meeting, I think it was last week, to kind of go through our, uh, draft rate analysis, uh, associated with the project, both the Pocagin wholesale rate calculation, and then potential uh, impact, uh, to the city's rates, not for the Pocagin project itself, but because of uh, increase, general increases in cost, and also the, uh, city's piece, uh, of the capital project, so. Um, we're still working through that, I think we're close to, um, having a draft to send down to DNR and the state for review. Um, but that piece of it is moving forward as well. Uh, there will not be a requirement for the city to adopt, uh, a new schedule of rates in conjunction with the closing. Um, so SRF, uh, does grant some flexibility there, knowing that we're on a short timeline. Um, and the thought being that we'd like to kind of see how the city has performed through the end of twenty twenty four, to have the most recent kind of calendar year financials in hand before we make any final recommendations, but that uh, rate study piece is moving forward, uh, as well, so just wanted to, to mention that.
Further to that, we have looked at rates for the last couple of years, for, on the rate subject, and we have declined to raise rates, Ryan and I have both looked at them, I think Baker Tilly had recommended it. So many years ago, we get serious about it, we had not done that, we will be doing that this year. Right now, we're waiting to see what the last year's true numbers, actual numbers are, and we will be coming back to you with a recommendation, uh, for rate increases primarily driven uh, due to inflationary figures that we've seen in the last, last few years, so we will be bringing that back to you, I think is what, uh, Jeff was alluding to, is that true, Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question, certainly? Jeff, you commenced by saying the state of Indiana was going to pay for this entire project. Why, uh, is the city of Angola issuing millions of dollars of bonds?
Yeah, so it, um, depending on how the, how the state papers it, we wanted to make sure that we're authorizing the full, um, the full amount of the project and, and because that the state sometimes offers a grant. And so in that case, we wanted to authorize the full project, so that if they were to authorize a grant, what they do is instead of just giving us a grant, they offer a, what they call a forgivable note, or forgivable ban. So essentially, it's still a.
Ban being a ban, a bond anticipation?
Anticipation note, correct, so the way they, they typically paper it is they'll set it up as a, a debt instrument, so it's a short-term note, a bond anticipation note, that's usually outstanding for three years, which coincides with the construction period, or a little past the construction period. Once the community gets to the end of that three-year period, they just forgive it. So it's, it's essentially a grant, but sometimes they set it up as a note. Uh, and so that's why we are authorizing, have the city authorize a debt instrument that equals the total amount of the project in case they do that now. They still may actually not require that, and they may just pay it out of the state treasury. Um, so that I don't know yet, but this ordinance authorizes the full project and the full borrowing as if the city were to, if the city were to have to take out a debt instrument for the entire amount.
Okay, that halfway answered my question, uh, but. Is, is, is it, I, I have not read this. Does it say in here somewhere that the state is going to pay for these bonds?
Um.
It looks like the city's borrowing a lot of money.
Yeah, it, it does not say that in this document here, that will be laid out in the, what the, it's the state, they call it the financial, um, the, trying to remember the exact term, um. It's, it's the, essentially the loan document that the state creates, uh, and enters into with the city, so. Um, that will be a separate document, financial assistance agreement, it just came to me. So the financial assistance agreement will eventually be an attachment to this bond ordinance, and the financial assistance agreement is the document that actually lays out specific terms on how the state is going to pay for the Pocagin project. So this is a, a parameters ordinance that just authorizes the city's ability to borrow up to that amount, it doesn't require the city, or compel the city to, to actually borrow that amount. Just gives the authorization, uh, if it's needed by the state.
Thank you.
I asked, I asked the same question somewhere along the line, and there is mounds of correspondence that goes back and forth between the city and the state on what their offer has been, so. If push came to shove, I don't think there'd ever be any doubt, due to all the documentation that is, you know, transpired between the two.
Can I ask one more? Your documentation was after January first?
Actually, that.
I mean, because we have new, new leadership down in Indianapolis.
That's true.
Well, the leadership isn't, new leadership is not at the IFA.
Well, new leadership is, though, the guy who's kind of, it's back.
Biggest risk we face with this project, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, was the federal government's freeze on grants and loans, because Indiana gets their money.
Forty percent.
From the federal government, so actually, what the president did put this at more risk than what the governors.
But if the state is, if it's, let's ignore that for a second, if the state is committed, and we have documents saying they're committed, they're going to find some way to pay us. You know, even if it means selling us Pocagin, I mean, they're, they're.
We're going to foreclose on the park?
That'd be nice one, so.
We need to, that would change leadership.
Yeah, that's a good point, dude.
Yeah, assuming you're, you're referring to mayor, the governor, for the governor?
I'm talking to the governor.
Yeah, um. Granted, there, there has, um, the, the correspondence have been with the IFA program. Uh, Jim McGough, who's the director of the IFA program, been for so, for many, many years, um, also the finance director and, um, uh, can't remember Bill Harkins' title, but, uh, executive director, I believe. All of them have been involved in, in those conversations, they still are, are at IFA. Um, you know, personally, I have no concerns, um, you know, there's plenty of documentation, and honestly, the, the city is, I mean, you all know this, is doing really the state a favor by taking on this project, so it's um, not as if, you know, this is a, I mean, even though there's going to be benefits to the city, it's not like this, the city came to the, the state asking for this, so this is something the state is asking for the city to do, um, so. Um, I understand the concern, I, I feel very confident, uh, based on our correspondence and conversations with IFA, that, um, you know, this project they want to see completed and, uh, with no impact to the city, so.
I'm assuming the, the funding mechanism from the state for the, for the Pocagin portion would have to be laid out before the debt could be closed on anyway.
Correct, because the city could not borrow twelve point four million dollars on its own without the state funding.
So we have Pocagin, it's.
Yeah, we have, yeah. That's correct, so they, again, that, that financial assistance agreement, um, will be drafted. We will be, actually, we've already started, but we will be preparing, um, our, and what we call our accounting report, that kind of lays out the sources and uses of funds, the repayment, and then documentation that shows that the city has the ability to pay back just the city's portion, not the state's portion. Uh, and that will be based on the sources and uses that's provided by the state.
And that would all be done before we would?
Well, well before the closing.
Yep. I, I do have one more question, it just, this sort of thing scares me. Can you go to Article two for me, which is, it says page seven, but that's, it's like, I don't know. Article two is purpose of borrowing and loan terms.
We're at, we're at.
On page seven. It says page seven, but it just like allows a lot of pages.
In the exhibits.
Oh, it's in the exhibits?
At Article two.
It's about two thirds of it. And the only reason I bring it up is because, you know, obviously, we're a little nervous, and there are blanks.
These are exhibits that show what the forms are going to look like.
When we, when we see this, because we'll have to approve this, I'm assuming that the council have to approve the actual amounts and stuff like that, of roads, right?
Not approving these ordinances as approving.
Sure, but that'll be filled in.
Yeah, these are, as Ryan stated, these are the, the form, and are you, I'm sorry, are you on exhibit A or?
Yeah, I, I, Article two, purpose of borrowing, I'm on. It's about half where David's like, exhibit B. Yeah, I just went.
Yeah.
Blanks, blanks are blank.
Yeah, somebody parked on the north side of the lot.
That's one of them to me. That's what I was leading over. Can you tell? I got there, I think I got it.
Can't tell what kind of.
When. For this borrowing. Right, right, and so when, when the city gets, it's done with this, those will be filled in.
They will be, yep, and so that, and white car? These documents will be filled in, and.
Will be part of the shooting. I'm sure there are yellow flashing lights.
All the final terms. So this is just the form of what's going to be final. Yeah, yep.
So as far as timing, is we need to authorize this before we know the funding mechanism, or is this something that can be authorized after we know the state's funding mechanism?
So i- in order to stay on track timing-wise, it'll need to be, um, adopted, um, at the Monday special meeting. Um, and that's in order to, to stay on track, and again, this is not authorizing, not locking into these terms, it's just authorizing the not to exceed amounts. Um, but in order to close by March eleventh, we will need to have, uh, of course, tonight's introduction, but Monday would be the uh, second and third readings, which would be the adoption of the ordinances, um, which authorizes the projects, and then, but we won't know the final terms until we have the financial assistance agreement. Um, actually, we'll have the, we'll have the terms before then, um, but we do not have the final terms right now.
And the financial assistance agreement will be available for our review before March eleventh?
It will, yes, yep. So Ice Miller will be, um, along with, uh, SRF or IFA's bond counsel, um, they will be preparing those documents, and they'll be sending those out to you for review prior to the loan closing.
Actually, we'll approve this by then, right? We, we would, we're going to approve this not knowing what the terms are going to be, all three readings, you're telling us we have to do that before we ever see a document, like the cart before the horse, in other words?
Yeah, so this, this document will be adopted in order to authorize moving forward, yes, with, with the project.
See, one of the things concerns me is, I'm told this is zero percent, but this talks about that this is a bid procedure like a normal municipal bond, with a ninety percent, ninety-eight percent possible, or discount to ninety-eight percent and a five percent interest limit, which means it's going out at a thousand dollar increments, like you're buying municipal bond, it also says it's taxable, not tax exempt as a municipal bond, and, which means that, that they can or cannot sell, and I, I'm worried about us being on the hook on all those things, because if we approve this, and something gets signed, it isn't zero percent, it's five percent plus the discount on top.
Yeah, that's good, you bring up a good point, so the, the way, uh, the bond ordinance was prepared by Ice Miller, and this is very common, um, is it authorizes more than one financing tool, again, this is not to exceed, very common practice, so the, the, uh, terms that you're referencing in there, uh, reference in open market bond financing, as if, if the city ever had to go out and issue an open market bond financing.
That's what this looks like to me.
So that is also in this, it's, and, and that's very common, just to give the city flexibility that if you needed to, for some reason, which we don't expect that in this case, if you needed to issue an open market bond, you'd have the ability to do that. Um, it also authorizes the SRF funding, uh, which will be at the zero percent, and granted, zero percent is not listed in here, that's correct. Um, that's, uh, what has been communicated via SRF to us, that's the agreement up to this point. I don't expect that to change, um, but yes, you, you are correct.
And then, excuse me for interrupting, in those terms that you're talking about, that we will actually be bound by, and other, other participants bound by, will be in that financial assistance agreement, is that true?
That's correct, yes.
This is kind of generalized, speculative, covers different bases, and doesn't bind us, but that financial assistance agreement will spell out who pays what and how much?
It will, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, all of that will be spelled out very specifically well before the closing, in fact, we have a pre-closing that's scheduled um, on February twenty fifth, tentatively. Um, and that's when we meet, um, with SRF to go through all the final terms, make sure everybody's on the same, same page. Um, so there will be plenty of opportunity to review that in, in those financial terms.
And if, if I may, I want to be sure, if we approve this, the mayor still has to sign this, so we, we have him as, as kind of a fail-safe. He, he, he won't sign this until we have this financial statement, is that correct understanding, even though we may authorize, this is authority for him to sign this if he chooses, but he can still say no, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so when this, when this ordinance is adopted, if, if the council decides to adopt it on Monday, um, that's a good way to put it, Kim, this is a general ordinance that authorizes the city's ability to issue debt if you so choose. It doesn't lock us into a debt, it doesn't lock us into any terms, doesn't require us to do the project, it just simply authorizes us to be able to do it if we decide to move forward.
It's not official unless the mayor signs it with.
No, they, they're going to insist on an adopted ordinance, which means it's law, so the mayor is, it will have to approve it, right?
The, yes, so the ordinance, once it's adopted, will need to be signed. That does not lock us into terms, that does not require us to close on any bonds. It just gives us the ability to issue bonds if we so choose.
And I had to read this in a hurry, does it say that someplace here? Because as I, I, I got through these, I started at five o'clock this afternoon, and I didn't see any place in here that, that gave us a fail-safe, which is what I'm worried about.
I don't think there is one in this, but, but if, I guess we wouldn't have to go forward with it.
You don't have to move forward and close on a loan, again, this, this is not the loan document?
We don't have to close on anything, but, but we can be in trouble in some cases if we don't close, that's what I'm concerned with. Yeah, I, I, I understand that nobody has to put their final signature on that, but what if we don't after we pass this ordinance? That's what I didn't see it.
If you don't move forward with the project, concern is what?
That there's some penalty to us.
Penalty, yeah, nope.
And I, as I said, I had to read this in a hurry, and I was looking for something like that, and, and everybody else is white-faced, they're in the same situation I am, I think that we read these in a hurry, and I, I, I want some fail-safe there, that if, if we have to back out, I want to know that that's there, and that's what I'm asking about. Yeah, it is, they're inherently, isn't it, in the process?
It's inherent in the process, so there, there isn't language, uh, specifically that says, you know, your point, council member, there, there's no, there's nowhere in here that says there's a penalty or no penalty if you decide not to move forward with the project.
Which means a legal rep.
By, by default, that's the city's response, that's the city's decision as to whether they want to do a project or close on a loan. Um, so. So this document, again, and I understand your, your concern, and I understand it's, it's a lengthy, a lot of legalese, uh, that, that you're getting here on short notice. Um, again, this is a, just an authorization, it's not requiring the city to do a project. There is nothing that would penalize the city if they decided not to do the project. Um, it's just simply giving the city the authorization to do it if, if you so choose.
Um, Jeff, one last question on the financial assistance agreement. How many pages do you believe that might be?
Uh, there should be a form of the financial assistance agreement in here.
Exhibit B, I believe?
Exhibit B. Yep, thank you, exhibit B, uh, I know there's multiple numbers of pages, it says page number one, exhibit B, form of financial assistance agreement. And so you'll see that it's, um, seventy-nine, ten, eleven, thirteen. So it is twenty, sorry, keeps going. Uh, twenty-four pages.
Okay, thank you, well, that's helpful that I have a draft of, of that, at least, uh, to the form.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, you're convinced that regardless of the change in leadership in Washington, Indianapolis, that we are going to get the money paid for?
I feel comfortable, yes.
And you're willing to simply, that's good?
Yeah.
I call the question. Let's just do it.
Any objections? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So much for that ordinance. Now, we've got another one identical to it. It uses words and numbers. Ordinance number 1772, 2025, an ordinance of the city of Angola, authorizing issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the sewage work of said city. The issuance of the revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therein or therewith, including the issuance of notes and anticipation of bonds, and revealing ordinance inconsistent therewith. This is the first reading on both of these, right? We have a second reading next week.
Yes.
So I have second and third. Second and third next week. So we do have some time to read it then.
Yes.
Okay, and we can vote no there if we vote yes here, right?
Yeah, tonight is just, just the first reading, introduction on first reading.
Except for I would never vote on anything, and I'm really feeling rushed here, that I'd have a chance to read. And when we're talking, and I'm a lawyer, I mean, this is confusing to me, and I'm a lawyer, so I'm sure it's confusing to everybody. And it really concerns me that we're rushed to. Yeah, we are too. We didn't particularly like the way this went out after the agenda had been set, so we.
I didn't receive these documents till after hours.
I'm not picking on anybody here. I know, I know. As I said, I'm a lawyer, and how lawyer's offices work, here, take these and sign them. Trust me, I'm a lawyer. Joe knows how it works, I know how it works, and everybody that's worked with a lawyer knows how it works. Trust me, I'm a lawyer.
I guess speaking of the timeline, is there a reason that it's so close to when it has to be adopted, that these came to us?
Yeah, we don't know. We received, we received the documents, it was late Friday afternoon, I believe it was, from Ice Miller, who prepared the documents.
And Ice Miller is the law firm working for the state, is that correct?
The bond counsel.
Bond counsel for the, for the city.
For the city?
Yes, so that's the city's bond counsel. The state uses, Oze McKinney is the firm that.
Ice Miller is who we chose, that's who we've always used for bond counsel. We issued any, these, this is the same process we've gone through every time we've issued them.
Basically, a straw man though here, right? I mean, we're pretending to borrow this money and finance the project.
Some of it, we actually are borrowing, some of it will be paid back.
So, yep, so this, so on the sewage side, we're authorizing.
It's eight hundred, what is it on the wastewater?
Yeah, on the wastewater side, the ordinance authorizes about $16 million. The project cost estimate total is about twelve and a half, eleven point, about 11.5 is represents Pocahontas portion of the project, which is going to be paid for by the state or through a forgivable grant or loan. The city's portion is just over a million dollars, and that is going towards the Kings and Metal Spinners Lift Station rehab. So again, just for context, the, what the city decided to do was pull together larger dollar projects that were needed to be done, and instead of just cash flowing those and using our own cash, SRF offered to lend the city money at zero percent as an incentive to work with the state and do this Pocahontas project, because it was going to benefit the state. So that's kind of the context behind why the city is also borrowing is because the terms are so good, SRF offered favorable terms at zero percent, so that's why we're rolling that piece of the project into the overall bond issue.
The projects that we're doing that we're paying back, we normally would have done regardless, either paid for out of our pocket or bundled it with a, with a bond later on. In conversations we were having with the state in preparation for the water for the state, for the state park, we said something about, had some other projects that we had going, and the state came back and said, hey, how about if we finance for those at zero percent, as long as the timing is agreeable to the timing of this project? In other words, we had to do it all at the same time. So we actually scrambled around trying to find as many projects that we needed to do and were going to do to be able to bundle it to hit this timeline. Free, interest-free money for 20 years is quite a gift. And the state basically came back and said, we are willing to do this and to thank you for working with us to take on the state project. They were doing it as a favor to us because we had done a favor to them by taking on their project. This project originally only started with water. It didn't go into wastewater until later in the process. And they basically came to us and said, hey, would you be willing to do this also? That wasn't their first choice, it wasn't their first plan. It was kind of like Plan B, and they were so happy that we were willing to work with them, that's when they came up and said, well, we'll bundle some other projects. Well, I don't have a problem with their benevolence there. I just want to make sure that their benevolence is reflected in what we're voting on.
Yes.
And I agree with you. Like I said, we've got stacks and stacks of documents. Yeah, I think it's great. I agree, but I don't know that this is what I've been told, and I don't want to buy an orange when they're green apple.
I agree.
Jeff, and Ice Miller being our bond counsel, are they, do they participate in writing the financial assistance agreement?
They do, yep, they do. So Oze McKinney, I believe, actually prepares, which is the bond counsel firm for the state, they actually prepare the financial assistance agreement. They'll send that to Ice Miller, because Ice Miller is the one that actually, so they'll send it to Ice Miller, Ice Miller review.
On behalf of the city?
Yes, and we receive that as well. So the bond counsel, Kim, you'll be on that email string as well in ourselves, that once those documents are created, they'll be sent to us for our review. And that'll occur prior to that February 25th pre-closing date.
But it won't occur before our next week?
It will not occur before your next week.
Speed it up. Pardon, is there any way to speed it up?
No, they're just not to that point yet. However, if, you know, what we could do, if, if we want to give ourselves more time, you know, we did a day count, Ryan, earlier today, Ross and I kind of worked on a day count to where if we wanted to hold off on introducing it tonight, we could wait and introduce it on Monday and give the council a little more extra time to read through it. You know, we still wouldn't have the final terms because that hasn't been presented to us as far as the, you know, having a zero percent documented in a, in a document. We don't have that yet, we won't have that by Monday. But if the council felt like it wanted more time to push this introduction out, you know, we could still do that, and I, and we could still accomplish the March 11th closing. It would require us to send out, let me back up. When the ordinance is adopted, the statutory process requires the city to publish what they call a purport of the bond ordinance. And when that publication is made, that starts a 20-day objecting period. So we have this 20-day objecting period that we kind of, kind of work around. The 20-day objecting period has to run before we can close, okay? So if we were to postpone introduction, we could still adopt this and let that 20-day objecting period expire before closing. However, we would need to send the notice that goes to the paper, to the paper before the bond ordinance is actually adopted. So it can always be pulled, but there is a little bit of risk there that we may send the purport to the paper for publication, and if something happened and it wasn't adopted, then we'd have to start the process over again. So it's all predicated on the March 11th closing and working backwards from there. But again, this is the city's project, so if there's concern about not having a chance to give this, you know, full vetting and reading through it, and you wanted a way to introduce it, we could do that.
I don't think that changes us. I mean, we can still vote no next week.
I think if we do one, we, I think we should move forward with it, to be honest with you. Just move forward with it, then we have two more readings.
That's why we have.
That way, we won't handcuff everybody.
And I don't think it's the other one until I sign it, because I can always veto it, is that not true?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, since I don't need to fund the water, but out of the road, we're also going to be involved in providing water to rest stop of 69. Is there going to be, somewhere field going to be in a field on that?
I do not believe so. I believe the state is going to be responsible for bidding, bidding and financing and ownership. So we're out of that completely. My understanding of that project.
I was concerned about if we had to subdue our borrowing capacity.
No.
A little bit of the difference with this project is we're adding a ton of infrastructure that's going to belong to the city at some point. That's why we're going to run the project, even though, you know, they're paying for everything that goes, but the state's going to pay for everything that goes north, it's going to belong to us. So we have, we should be the ones that bend it out and oversee it, because it's really our, our stuff, so.
The rest stop, we will not have any ownership.
We have declined. Nobody can connect it.
Yes, we have declined to take ownership of it. I move we approve this ordinance.
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, Jeff, thanks for coming.
Well, my pleasure. Yeah, again, apologize for the delay in getting the document. I know it's a lot to ask, so appreciate your, your patience and your questions, and if you think of any other ones between now and Monday, let me know. In the meantime, I will, for what it's worth, I will reach out to SRF and see if they can somehow send us any kind of documentation that solidifies that.
Just think of that, that we really mean it.
Zero percent, then we could really use that, and we'd love to have that, so I would do my best.
Think of that phrase, trust me, I'm here from the government and I'm here to help you, you know, that's a joke line, and so I have a little lack of trust, not with you.
Understood, yeah.
That wasn't a challenge, counsel, or questions, so that's not just saying.
Okay, I understand. Well, Joe's already told me to look for the.
Tellers.
We have had nothing but good relations with the IFA, and I would assume that it will continue after the rest of this project. They've always been very helpful, they've always followed through exactly what they said they were going to do.
And the bond counsel has a high obligation to us, right? So that's some comfort.
Do you see a situation there? Will you be here for the bond, for the bid opening or not? I was not.
I will not be, yeah. So Ryan and I were talking beforehand, if you'd like to have someone here, I can see if I can have someone in my place attend. So if that's, would like for me to do that, I'd be happy to do that, that would be.
Council's thought on that, you want to have a representative, maybe Philly here for the. I'd like to have you to make sure, and probably will be, is Chad and Jeff, or not Chad and Jeff, but Tom and Jeff and Amanda, those are the people I'd get. Yeah, I can, they need to be here, and Amanda would have been here this evening, but she's not feeling well tonight. That's, I'm not thinking of anybody here, I just have questions.
If anybody has any questions this week, as you read through the material, I can touch with John.
Yep, please do.
But through his email and. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Jeff.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff, don't, doesn't need to stay for this, we have one more piece of business, and I think it is with Councilman Chairman.
Yes, just wanted to give you a quick update, a very quick report on AIF, let you know that we have, are moving forward, and we have an applicant that is involved in the process, and, and another potential one that is thinking about applying for funds. So I think that's pretty much, I wanted to just say that we're off and running with that, and we need some help to promote it, so we may be asking for some help with that too, down the road.
All right, any other new business? Hearing now, the next council meeting will be Monday, February, one from today, seven o'clock in this chamber.
Mayor, can you take care of your vehicle now?
I look, I don't take care of it. No, my Jeep is out here, the lights are flashing. I don't know, the guy with the crowbar standing.